Okay, good evening everyone. Uh, time is uh five thirty-two. Uh, the April eleven two thousand twenty-four meeting is now now called to order. Um, so the agenda for tonight's meeting will be a government-to-government meeting with the Suquamish Tribe. Uh, we'll start with uh welcoming and opening remarks uh by tribal chairman, Leonard Horst.
Hocksho Gill, thank you for coming over to Suquamish and Port Madison Reservation for this important meeting. And uh we have a lot of new faces in the room, so I thought we would start with interactions here at the table.
Yeah.
So I'll pass the mic. That's back.
Good evening everyone, we're doing this, my name is Lori Morsat and I'm recently newly elected to Suquamish Tribal Council.
Hi, I'm Sal Hill, Asher Cory, I'm a newly elected tribal council member and I'm a traditional food and vice program coordinator here for the tribe.
Good afternoon, I'm Erin Carver, uh, Suquamish Tribal Council Secretary and Port Madison Enterprise's Chief Operating Officer.
Um, hi, I'm Rae Martinez, I am School Board Director for Area Three, um, I'm the Vice President and I'm also the liaison for the Kingston area. She's pretty little.
Hi, I'm Stacy Mills, I'm the Director of School Board District Five Director and also the tribal liaison to both the Suquamish and Port Gamal's Clalum Tribe.
Good evening, I'm Rick Eckert, it's the Board Director uh for Area One and I'm the Legislative Representative for the Board this year.
Thank you. I am the latest one and I am an administrative assistant for P K Landmark.
Okay, and uh Mike Desmond, uh Director of District Two, uh President and also W I A Representative.
Uh Rachel Davenport, interim Superintendent and Secretary to the Board.
Welcome everybody, I'm Josh Bagley, Vice Chairman, Suquamish Tribe.
Hi, I'm Beverly Godfrey, uh District Four Representative and um City Council uh Liaisonist.
Good evening, Brenda Guerrero, the Director of Education for the Suquamish Tribe.
Good evening, uh Luther J Mills, Suquamish Tribal Council Member and Port Madison Enterprise Ambassador.
Okay, once again, thank you everybody for getting together and um I'm here to uh work on these important issues. If you've been around a little while and you've probably heard my uh reflection on this relationship, it's always good to revisit the fact that this reservation uh is down to twenty-five with uh G C I. And um we've uh since the treaty was signed, um we've been working on trying to maintain our culture in this uh great uh efforts by the federal government to assimilate us and eliminate our um standing as a tribe and get our sovereignty and also raise our culture and our language. So um people didn't intend that to happen when uh treaty was signed, we did put aside promise of education, we expected our education to be here on a reservation, but that never really ever really truly happened and eventually we were all, our ancestors were forced to um attend uh mandatory force to attend the twelve-year school program at our so that's always been uh something that our uh current generation has been trying to overcome through some things that were lost in that process. Since then, um we've been able to attend public schools and look upon the school district and the state to enable a government to provide that education that was promised in the treaty. We'll see what the district are part of that, we believe part of that promise and that was one of the main reasons we like to have these annual meetings to make sure we check in with each other on um how things are going. Um, I think that we've uh, you know, had our ups and downs, we've made progress and we've had setbacks. But I know the people in this room, I've gotten to know pretty well and I don't want to give up on trying to um to make a positive uh impact on all of our students and bring more uh try to curriculum in these schools, maybe more of our cultural language, value systems in these schools and educate each other. You know, we've got best interests at heart of our students, so it's a very open and always job.
Okay, alright, thank you. Um, so I just wanna open with a couple, come over with the remarks. Um, first, most importantly, thank you for hosting us here today. Um, you know, it's it's an honor for this uh to be here um at your facility today, so I look forward that we can do uh continue doing this and and I like the idea of um of coming to your facilities recently, so. Um, so I um, this is my first time connecting this government-to-government meeting as as the Board President. Um, so when I was preparing for it, I I was trying to take a couple of minutes to think, you know, how I wanted to try to guide this meeting and the first thing I thought about is, you know, um, purpose, you know, what do we want to try to accomplish at this meeting? Um, for that, and um I think, you know, for me and I speak for the rest of the Board, but taken out of their comments, is just continue to grow the relationship uh between the two groups uh and foster a partnership um with that. So, I think the biggest thing is uh what I wanna try to do this evening is just be open and honest, you know, just not, you know, be afraid to bring up specifics, I mean, you know, sometimes I feel like we kind of, we come together and we we try to address issues, um but um, you know, the best way to do that is just gonna be getting down to specifics. And sometimes I might be uncomfortable talking about those, but I think we we all have the same goal in hand uh to do that. So anytime that, you know, when we're going through the rec- recommendation, if we can, you know, bring up examples that will help us, you know, just kind of get into the weeds uh to try to do that, so I think the important things, we're all committed uh, you know, uh working towards the same goal and that's um you know, to improve our relationship and improve the quality of education and the quality of life at these schools for uh the Suquamish tribal kids, uh students and all students in general, so. Um, just looking forward to the conversation, again, thank you.
Man, you may introduce yourself, please.
Yes.
Jay was kinda hyped. Thanks Brenda for making this big good year.
Yeah.
From your conference. Here as well, welcome to the acting of reason and and um, just that, as far as maybe if they've never been in here before, you guys see all the paddles on the wall, these are representative of our canoe heritage and uh as you know, many of you know the Suquamish were a marine tribe, we didn't live on a river uh like other tribes did, so we moved out into the waters of the sea and found a farm right in our communities and we hosted the first uh, the last leg of the nineteen eighty-nine paddle, see how that kind of brought the actual resurgence that came around with the New Jersey coming to Suquamish, so we very active in that with our two uh, two or three communities the tribe itself has and a number of family communities. And every year we get, usually get a gift of a paddle from a different tribe. As we started to collect those, our past Executive Directors suggested we have these in our, in our council chambers, so many of these were gifted to us. Um, to us uh, um by uh different, different tribes, um and uh so we're really proud of those and of course we have some that were made by um our relay artists and remember Lori's family here that is still, still works on with the work that he's been doing for us as well, so I'm really proud of that, part of our heritage. So to have a go ahead, I'll go over to Josh, Josh is gonna go ahead and read um our statement, it already um some of the goals that we have and requests that we have, observations that we have with the district. And then um I think we have a couple of members of the tribal parent committee, does anybody here wanna add on to that once he's done? Um, okay, you ready Cory? Okay, then Cory will follow up with the statement um after Josh.
Okay. North Kids App School District, the Suquamish Tribe continues to work to improve and foster a better working relationship with the North Kids App School District. Our priority remains our children, therefore we will continue to advocate for a safe and exclusive quality learning environment at NKSD. This can only be achieved with an open and honest dialogue between the Suquamish Tribe and NKSD. Following our recent meeting, we provide the following requests, questions, recommendations, and concerns. One, the Su- the Suquamish Tribe is requesting that the NKSD School Board members and administrative staff show respect for the Suquamish tribe's culture and sovereignty through genuine efforts to learn and understand the structure of our Suquamish tribal government, culture, practices, and values and our strong history of self-determination. Two, the Suquamish Tribe is requesting timely and ongoing communications between NKSD Administrative Staff, School Board, and the Suquamish Tribe's Education Department. Direct or pertaining to significant pertaining to significant changes that affect current and future Suquamish tribal member and descendant families with students attending or scheduled to attend NKSD. The Suquamish, or three, the Suquamish Tribe is requesting that NKSD Administrative Staff work directly with the Suquamish Tribe's Education Department to include the success of tribal students in the NKSD District Plan and clearly outline in district-wide policies and procedures. The Su- or, four, the Suquamish Tribe is requesting that NKSD School Board and Administrative Staff leverage the Suquamish tribe's culture, expertise, and inherent knowledge to support district programs and/or services pertaining to tribal students. Five, the Suquamish Tribe is requesting regular and ongoing opportunities for both tribal leaders and community members to engage in opportunities to provide input, feedback, and implementation of services provided by NKSD. Six, the Suquamish Tribe is requesting that NKSD explore methods to efficiently share and use tribal student data to support student performance and outcomes. Number seven, the Suquamish Tribe is requesting that NKSD SD explore methods to develop and incorporate culturally appropriate and realistic performance measures for student data collection. Number eight, the Suquamish Tribe is requesting both Suquamish and Port Gamal's Clalum Tribe Representatives' seats on the NKSD Ethics Committee when the committee is established. Number nine, the Suquamish Tribe is requesting Skyward and Google Classroom access for the Suquamish tribe academic coaches who work directly with students and teachers to increase the student out- outcomes and success. Number ten, the Suquamish Tribe is requesting regular and ongoing reporting to both the Suquamish and Port Gamal's Clalum tribes of the total dollar amount of impact aid received by NKSD and where the funds are being allocated. Number eleven, the Suquamish Tribe is requesting that NKSD address parent and community concerns regarding the safety or lack of for K through twelve students due to bullying and other bias-based behaviors causing emotional and psychological harm and interfering with students' ability to learn. Number twelve, the Suquamish Tribe is recommending that NKSD provide K through twelve students healthier meal options to include lower sugar and sodium op- sodium items. Number thirteen, the Suquamish Tribe is recommending that NKSD explore other methods for administering state, state testing that may result in more accurate individual student and district-wide data by considering age and developmentally appropriate testing preparation and administration. Number fourteen, the Suquamish Tribe is requesting that NKSD address the parent and community concerns regarding unconscious input and implicit bias towards tribal students resulting in alarming reports of disciplinary action. We have shared responsibility for students, the education of tribal youth is a shared responsible- responsibility among three sovereign units of government, tribal, federal, and state. The NKSD should always recognize that all parties are united in their concern and responsibility for students. We will, we look forward to receiving your response to the Suquamish tribe's specific questions enumerated above. We also look forward to great cooperation and more open substantive dialogue that better meets the Suquamish needs.
Thank you.
Okay, Cory?
Here, right here.
My name is Cory Sylvie, Suquamish tribal member, NKSD parent, and NKSD I T P E C Chairwoman. The reason for taking time off the floor this evening is to help elevate the voices of the parents who have Indigenous students attending North Kids App School Districts and especially those parents attending monthly inter-tribal parent education committee meetings. Each month, parents of Indigenous students meet together and with Native liaisons and education staff discuss upcoming events, current trends and concerns, recommendations for professional development, and other issues or important topics impacting our Indigenous students. Our meetings average between two to three and a half hours with anywhere from twenty to forty participants each month. From these meetings, we've learned that parents of Indigenous students attending NKSD are seeking a higher level of support and action from both governing bodies to help ensure that our students are embraced while attending school, safe while attending school, and uplifted to achieve, to achieve and succeed in academics and in life. Our Indigenous students are playing sports for the district, participating in clubs and band, bringing their culture into the classrooms, sharing our stories and teachings, inviting their favorite teachers and staff to our community events and celebrations. Our students are also experiencing discrimination, alienation, and consequences greater than the behavior. Not every Indigenous student has these experiences, but some do and some is too many. We take our responsibility of raising our children serious to be, and although the language and messaging is conveyed differently most times, we too enforce structure, guidance, redirection, consequences, and most importantly, age and developmentally appropriate expectations. Here is when we say that we are working hard to foster and protect the relationship we've built with our children where they are treated as equals, asked for their perception, perspective, and truth, where we strive to live in harmony with one another and keep our homes safe and free from judgment and shame. We don't, we recognize our children as an extension of ourselves and in the same sense, your teachers and staff are an extension of you and your leadership as a school board. With that being said, please consider leaning into our recommendations. Please consider partnering with us towards making positive and necessary changes to increase and ensure student success. And more importantly, please lean into us as capable and dedicated parents of Indigenous students who care deeply for our children. This government-to-government meeting is a reminder that regardless of who sits in these elected seats for both the tribe and the district, the output of action and the level of engagement coming from these seats impacts our current and future NKSD Indigenous students and parents always. I look forward to progress and I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you Cory.
So go ahead, we're all here from the district.
Sure, um.
We need to get your mic.
So I thought that um, you know, we will be responding to the letter, um, so I figured the best way to do that is if we could just go through each one of those um, each one of the twelve items, sorry, fourteen items and uh just give a chance to ask any of our questions.
Sure, if you have any, I mean. You've been addressing fifty, fifty percent of our market. Fourteen's a long list, but
Yeah.
Uh, but uh you feel free to hit for a thousand if you want.
Sure, and yeah, I kinda get.
And I know that some of them would take some research.
Exactly, and and that's why I kind of um, like I mentioned, open remarks is I just wanna try to call to see if there's any specifics, you know, that that we need to uh so, take for example number one, um, so is it um, the tribal council's feeling that the the school board is not showing respect for the tribe's culture or just, you know, it's, or it's just important that we continue to point that out and make it a point of focus? Is there any specific things for that one?
Well, I think there's probably somewhat in reference to the graduation event, I would think is one.
Okay.
Yeah, it was for this, this front and center, so as just an example of just trying to avoid um, you know, um making changes in the protocol of our relationship for that concentration first.
Okay.
But that's.
Perfect, I appreciate it, yeah, exactly, so.
Okay, okay, so I, I mean, well, you know, we can let you know and do something intentional, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, as well, I would think, capable of doing that, right Brenda?
Yeah.
In a good way.
But it helps us, you know, it, it, just by making that up of one of the fourteen items and and your comments, it it helps us to understand how important that that event is, so that
Anybody, anybody have anything to add to that?
My concern with um, you know, where I think if I had a former superintendent that was acting on behalf of the board, and again, this is a government-to-government but yet I, we felt that, you know, the superintendent was, you know, the one we, we were giving.
Yeah, and and I understand that, I mean, that still is gonna be the case, I mean, the, you know, the the superintendent um is uh you know, we will work with the superintendent, I mean, she has the most knowledge. Um, you know, and I try to keep as informed as possible, but, you know, I'm not a professional educator, so, you know, we're still gonna lean on the superintendent to help us and that's why she was kinda to serve her staff uh this evening too.
Yeah, and I was just gonna say too, I think that a lot of it was the past superintendent and not working with our superintendent closely enough as we wanted, or you know, and like, cause like Jay said, I think this meeting is for us to work together, for us to work with the school board and then the su- our superintendent, or Brenda and your superintendent should be the ones working together below us, you know what I mean?
Yeah, but yeah, let's start.
We understand that, you know, I think we understand that you're voluntary, so. But, so, and we're fortunate enough to have some paid positions, but understanding that we're on a professional relationship, we understand that. But we just wanna make sure that Brenda's first stop.
Okay.
And then it works, it can work out from there when stuff is needed, if you need, you know, you need a delegate, and we really need you to talk to the chairman and one of the council members if you could hold them for me, there's some logistical things sometimes that we've got to do as well.
Okay.
But we can work with your liaison too um as well.
Yes.
I appreciate for the, we've met a couple of times already and just being able to reach out and Brenda's availability, um, uh, but Brenda here and and Tony as well, I see she's been with the leads too. Um, it's, it, it's been really um responsive and kind of really hanging out questions, so we appreciate that.
Yeah, I agree, I think that, yeah, that's why I said the past superintendent, because you guys have been working together a lot better already, so, that's awesome, thank you.
Okay, um, any other questions on the board?
I would just say, um, there are times, so when the tribe has events that you would like us to have, let us know. Because sometimes there's events that it's, you know, not being part of the tribe, it's not sure if they're meant for out those not part of the tribe, they're meant for the public and we don't wanna presume and and come, you know, show up. So, if you, if there's an event that you're holding and you would like us to be part of it, please and let, let us know and and I know, we'll try to be there when we can, but
Right.
We never wanna presume, so it's always helpful to to let us know what things you would like to see us have.
We can do that, we'll make sure that uh, I think you're fifty-five now, right now, Rick?
Wait, well.
We're trying to get to the front of the line for the food.
I'm fifty-three some more.
Oh, okay, well, we'll, we'll have to wait, we'll have to wait a little longer. Don't be too, don't be too much of a rush. Um, okay, um. Sorry about that, I didn't wanna say.
I just wanted to um see if I can, plastic, we work our way up from the bottom to the top because the ones from the um, top were recommendations really from last year.
Okay.
Um, so, if we could address the, at least the bottom
Sure.
Four right now, that would be great.
Okay, yeah, what I had uh written up for fourteen is um are, um, do you feel that um tribal members are aware of the reporting process for any specific issues that occur, or is that something that we can help uh educate on that?
No, they're, um, they are aware of the reporting process, it's just the way that these are being handled at the school district. Um, I think mainly our concern right now is with the Kingston Middle School, um, with some of our our children that are attending, um, the way that they're being treated by staff, um, is really concerning. And it was brought up at our last ITP meeting, um, so this was.
I'm not aware of any current reports, investigations that we receive or.
I know, but uh I know uh that the representative in ITPEC, and Cory, if that's you, when we meet, oh, sorry, when we meet and I think the avenue that we discussed, um, and if there's a different avenue to have those come to us, um, but the avenue that um Brenda and Tony and Gwen and I discussed was that if there is um those type of complaints and complaints made that are coming from the ITPEC meeting that they go to our ITED meeting so that we get those. If they're immediate complaints, then they go specifically to the principal and assistant principal, so.
Yeah, it's just that if a, a formal report's not made, it never really rises to our level, so we're not really aware of that, so any any way that we can educate them or if they feel like there's any barriers to them recording, like they don't feel comfortable or anything, those are the things I'm interested in, I'd like to try to limit so that we can get them through the the process and they have an avenue to appeal, you know, any decisions are made, so it's just more formal nature, that's all I would hope for.
And I, I will say that I believe one of the last year's recommendations talked a little bit about culturally responsive and and um the differences in cultures and 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 students and how we treat each other in school and I will say that we brought in August and then again in February uh Ben Abali who talks about um culturally responsive classrooms, how to intervene immediately, um, if you're a staff member, not just a teacher, we have educators, our food service workers that witness things that go on, a safe way to intervene immediately instead of allowing it to continue and then that student is dealing with it when they go to their next class, which may impact their behavior in that next class. And so uh we, we brought that trainer in and I know it's something that we are gonna uh continue to work on. And at our last ITED meeting, Brenda and Tony brought um another professional development around, and I'm gonna get the name of it wrong, so Brenda, now look at you. It was the, the blanket training where we lay out the fifty blankets and it was around, I'm sorry, I'm gonna get the name of it wrong. It's Kairos, Kairos blanket. And they were both very, um, listening to them explain it, it was very impactful to them and uh we talked about how weaving that into our beginning of the year training and professional development for our staff, so.
Did you say, um, did you say NKEA is aware of the issue?
Yes, yes. Yeah, Ben Abali's a WEA um trainer for um the State Education Association, so trains with all of the teachers in the state.
Um, so I don't, I don't wanna leave this one just hanging out, say that we acknowledge the issue and are aware of it and will continue working on it. Uh, and then just ask that um, we just partner together to help people actually file a formal um complaint or or issues, sort of, regardless of.
Right, and I do have monthly meetings with um Suquamish Elementary, Kingston Middle, but we haven't been able to do it for a couple of months because of our a conflict in our schedule, so I haven't been able to talk to Adam about that, the issue that's coming up, but we do have a meeting on Tuesday. Yeah, so I will talk to him as well, so, um, about some concerns that we do have. And then with um Kingston High School too, I meet with Murray for two, so.
Okay.
Kingston Middle School.
This is Adam, sorry, he's our new, he's our new Kingston Middle School principal.
Okay, you can use that sort of thing. Okay. Um, thirteen, I'm gonna have to lean on you, because a lot of this is around testing. So, the first question is, um, you know, what are we mandated to do for testing? How much real room do we have there? Uh, if you know, that we can explore other types of testing.
Yeah, Gwen, um, uh, they they were sent ahead of time. So, Josh, thank you for reading them. Uh, one of my big questions was what's the, what what are we, what do we want to solve with this? What do we want to, how do we wanna tackle this? Because there are some requirements, but if there's something that's um is going on there uh that's inappropriate, or if somebody needs a small testing environment, we have a lot of different tools for state testing, or is this individual curriculum testing? So, that one I had a lot of questions on.
I'm gonna invite Cory up, because this was brought up at the ITPEC meeting. So, and I'm not sure if it was at the last one or the one that prior, but I guess I have.
Thank you, Brenda. Um, so amongst parents, the conversation, we so we ask for data often at our ITPUC meetings. Um, and we don't only wanna see our indigenous students' data, but we also wanna see it compared to the district. And we're not necessarily asking for you to throw out state testing. And we're not saying that there doesn't need to be um an evaluation and and measurements and data to compare to. What we are saying is that some of our practices and systems in the school district are are old. They're testing methods that we experienced as students going through North Isar School Districts. And we're confident that there are other ways to test our students that truly reflect their academic success. Um, there are small steps like making sure that all of our students who have IEPs are offered those testing um accommodations. But more than that, we know that our students don't test well under pressure. We know that testing for um four to six hours a day is a best practice for our kids. And so, we're hoping that through this recommendation, the board and the superintendent can use it to say, see, this might not be working. And here's this group of parents and students um as evidence. And um when we too wanna see the data. And we wanna celebrate when the data looks better than it did the last year. Um, but we also know our children and we know that when they're coming home from those testings, they feel that they didn't do well leading up to testing. They are feeling um anxious because of the messaging around it, that it reflects the teachers' practices, that the school wants to look as though um they are being successful. And that pressure being messaged to the students is impacting the data that you're receiving. And so, we're just asking that you explore some other options that um even some of the earlier steps could be talking to teachers about how to prepare their students for testing. Um, that you're doing as well as you can. What do you need to feel prepared tomorrow morning? I'm so happy that you're here and we're gonna get this done. And let me know if you have any questions, that those smaller steps can even show us changes in our data moving forward. And so, we're not asking for you to throw it out. We're just asking for you to explore some other ways to conduct those testings so that when we see that data, it truly reflects the students that you have attending the school, especially ours.
Thanks. Sorry. Would it be beneficial to um maybe at an ITED meeting share some of the universal tools? I know state testing is just one test. So, I will just tell you from a kiddo that's coming up, I have a daughter who's gonna have to do the state testing again. And she went all the way back to last year and said, Mom, it took me three days to do the writing, or it took some people in my class just an hour.
Mm-hmm.
And this is a year later and it's still impacting her. So, I I understand how any way we set up our kids for success for that type of testing, it's like, it doesn't matter how long it takes, how important prepping them is.
Mm-hmm.
Would it be beneficial to help, like, show the parents, maybe at Brenda and at ITPEC and show our parents, like, universal embedded tools that are available for every kid, regardless of IEP or Python four? I'm not sure if everybody knows those are available for every student. There's both embedded and non-embedded tools. And then there's designated supports that are also available for every kid, embedded and non-embedded. And a lot of people don't use those. And then accommodations, of course, for Python four and IEP, but it may be beneficial to even to show you, I don't know, that like your awareness of all of the different tools that are in there, but show our parents how to.
Yeah. I think information sharing would um would help us understand more of, like you said, what's available and and what can be practiced. And then opening the conversation to how those tools are used in each of the classrooms and whether or not the professional development is there for those teachers to offer um the tools and accommodations. So, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so when I read this, I thought more of the test itself, but what I think I'm hearing you say is more, it's more the the social, emotional and and the support of the student around the testing.
Mm-hmm.
Am I hearing that right?
Yes. If we can get to a point where we throw it out, that would be great. But in in between now and then, um, how we conduct the test, yes. And it's important for you guys, I mean, we rely heavily on our data as a sovereign nation. We use that to apply for funding. Um, we use it to measure our own success. And so, so we understand how important the results are. Um, but we wanna make sure that our students come home feeling like they did their best. And they come home feeling like their teachers in however many classes they're in um gave them the accommodations and the support they needed to to do the best that they can. And then when we as parents see that data, we don't have questions around the how it was conducted, but we have questions about what that data is telling us. And we too can provide recommendations to um tribal councils, school board, Brenda, Tony, and anybody else who wants to hear us.
Well, I I think we have a lot more control about how we give it and what we give. So, then I think that's good. These are the kinda things that we we probably can make more grounds on than the test itself, cause that's a lot of acts directed. But like you said, making the kids who are more concerned, making sure that kids and the parents and teachers all know the options. Um, you know, I I had a kid that needed to pull out testing in another room, you know, more time, you know. If you just stuck him in there and gave him the test, yeah, he wasn't gonna do so well.
Yeah.
So, I fully understand that. So.
Well, then by high school, you're teaching these kids how to advocate for themselves, which is a skill that they're gonna need in college and in the workforce. So, you're kinda leaning, you're you're dabbling into.
Just hold on there.
Um, by the time our students are in middle school and high school, if they know too what kind of accommodations to ask for, uh, you're giving them some life skills to be successful beyond school, which I'm sure every teacher would like to to feel that they accomplish by the time those students graduate. So, yes, thank you.
Well, I'm a former teacher, so I've given that test many times. And it is frustrating for the teachers and the kids, cause we're trying not to make it stressful for them. But on the other hand, we know we want them to show what they can do and do their best. One of the um accommodations that I hope all the teachers are using is there's practice questions. And in our classroom, we would give the practice test question, just one question, you know, earlier in the year. And then we would talk about the results. And um I would have the kids tell me, well, why did you choose that one? And a lot of times, it was um the the misunderstood what the question was asking. And once the kids could tell, oh, I chose it cause it said this. And and someone else said, well, but that's not what they meant by that part. And it really was helpful for the kids to have that dialogue between themselves. It helped me understand why that question was confusing to them. And it made a big difference. The kids who got twos instead of threes, because it was just a few questions and they would've been at Stanford.
Yeah.
I think that that's one of the things about culturally biased testing, we we reminded too is is that one of the things that um when we did the study back in the day, like the last system of the model, um curriculum, was that there were three things that we found would help see success minimally. Uh, the minimum three things was more needed teachers, more travel break down in the schools and less, um, no more culturally biased testing. So, one of the things we thought about was like this team approach, whereas maybe instead of the individual sitting by themselves, whether it was a community or a tribe or whatever, you work together, you know. People have different skill sets and um we work with teams. So, sometimes I think that's right where maybe they're having that group discussion about the test.
Yeah. Makes a big difference.
Makes a big difference. So, glad to hear about that.
I would just like to add on to that request. Last year, we requested when we get our data from the district, it only shows our Sappamish kids. If we can get, um, again, I'll request it, to get the whole school's data along with ours, so we can compare how our kids are doing compared to everybody else's. Wow.
Kinda hits.
Yeah, and just just a reminder, um, the individual uh school connections meetings that we do, uh, with each school, the presentations for those, I mean, for the most part, we're usually breaking out as cohorts. Uh, and so, just by going through and looking at those presentations, you probably gonna put on there, but I think you might put them down. Okay. Um, so yeah, I think that I appreciate the feedback. I think that the two big things, uh, data sharing, I think we could definitely address that. And then the the messaging for the testing, I think that's important. That's important for all students to. Yeah. Um, you know, the actual um s- mandate of state testing, that uh is probably not something we can tackle right now. So, um, we're just, we're gonna look at that.
Mm.
Okay. Um, so twelve, um, I thought was a a great recommendation, um, dealing with uh school lunches. I think the biggest thing there to to point out is just making sure that parents are educated on that, that, you know, when you're talking about school lunches, there's kinda two different things. I mean, there's when you're looking at the prepared, basically thick tray lunch that you're serving the students, that that's one thing. But then there's also additional items that maybe you go purchase. And maybe that's where these are coming from. Cause when you look at the actual tray plate lunches, those are usually set menus that I have to look for USDA uh gotten around and everything. So, is that fair to say?
It is, yeah. I I made a couple of notes just from meeting with our nutrition service director. And um, they, he talked about the options. And so, I have a few kids myself. I know if they're looking at a thing of Fruit Loops or, you know, some breakfast yogurt, he might choose those fruit loops. And even though I don't want him to, but um I I do wanna say that there are options there. And so, some of it might go back to, Cory's been saying before about educating, um, and talking to our kids about, hey, that's probably not a great option for you. Even though yogurts have a lot of sugar too. You may wanna choose some of the fresh fruit or dried fruits. Um, even some of the juices are high in sugar, so you may wanna milk or something. So, it does go back to educating the kids there.
Yeah, so but I think if, so if there's specific items probably on the the, what am I gonna say, offering side, you know.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Energy drinks or or something like that, you know. That's something that I would I would definitely wanna know about, you know, that I think we we would look into, I would try to look at. Um, so I think there's just like uh any additional specifics would be very important.
Yeah, and we're doing a couple of um experimental offerings this year. One of them are salad wraps and the other one is actual salads. And so, those are a couple, I know we have some principals here, so I don't know how well those, they see the lunches every day. I don't know how well those are received. I have heard that the salad wraps at the secondary schools have been going very quickly, if that happens. I don't know if there was.
And there isn't secondary options for elementary kids, is there? There isn't stuff that they can buy, is there?
It's for extra purchase? No.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good thing. So, I just, I I think that's what they're, I think a lot of the issues were, I think a lot of the issues we're talking about elementary school where kids can't get those secondary options.
Is there any um traditional foods going on, putting through these menus at all? Salmon knee meats, things like that, for more, I mean seafood.
Yeah. Uh, yeah. Um, not that I'm aware of, but that's, I mean, it's it's not opposition, yeah.
Right. So, we're only there USDA, and even our USDA are quality programs to get salmon, salmon, things like that, um, beans, wilders. So, I'm always advocating for
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and. Yeah, absolutely.
at least our, and our, I do it all the time with our kids, our students here is just getting the diversity. So, I'm always gonna.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And, no, thank you.
Hi, everyone. Can I just share some of this?
I don't know. Have you heard the I- impact?
I am, yes. I'm the vice chair.
Go ahead briefly, please.
Just very briefly, OSPI, the nutrition program, and the USDA are reviewing uh incorporating traditional foods as reimbursable items. So, just wanted to share.
Great.
So, coming down the line, yeah.
I thought there was some energy around that. So, I've heard some energy around that. And USDA is um is empowering itself, or being empowered, or being encouraged to report it.
Oh, that's good.
Okay. Um, so number eleven, I think, kind of ties a little bit into fourteen. So, um, the same thing there, it's just, it's the same question is, again, formalized reporting, getting it through the investigative process so that it can be, it can be addressed there. Um, I mean, unless there's any specific uh issues to report to right now. So.
Okay.
Yeah, just a question.
Um, just a comment really. And I really appreciate, I just wanted to note, um, I've been able to uh take part in the um ITPEC meetings and just um kinda hear um the feedback. And it's been really good and helpful to hear um from the parents. And I just um appreciate that and appreciate that you guys have um been inviting me to, or been okay with me joining. Um, and I think that when I look at numbers eleven and fourteen, um, what it makes me think of, and I think what was talked about a little bit, is our kids feeling a sense of connectedness and being feeling connected, um, and having those safe adults at school, having people that they trust. Um, and I think that's big. I think that's big when we talk about, um, the bullying and the harassment, no matter whether it's student to student or even staff-student um relationships as well. I think being connected and feeling connected and having our kids feel connected, it's a lot more of the social, emotional, um, learning work that we have to do, that we keep working on. I know, um, we've seen some really great presentations of the work that's being done. And I would just encourage, um, that our staff at the district really continue that, um, because it it's so much, um, so needed. Uh, I think what I was hearing from parents, um, is just that the kids aren't, you're feeling disconnected, right? And you don't feel like you can report it, because if you're feeling so disconnected, there's not a good safety net for that. So, I just wanted to kinda, I guess, um, notate that, um, that I, that's what I was hearing from some of those parents, um, was that concern too, was the kids, um, in the buildings maybe not feeling connected enough to be able to find those trusted people to do that. And that's really important. And I think that's gonna go a long way in really helping with, um, you know, those sorts of um horrible issues, um, that shouldn't be happening to our kids at school. Um, you shouldn't, school should be a safe place and it shouldn't be feeling that way. So, I think the more we can work towards the social, emotional learning, the more that's gonna help with that. Thank you for letting me, um, be a part of those meetings. And it's, um, always good to hear from from the parents.
Lori, can I have a quick?
Um. Are the kids from Gordon and Wolfley who go to Kingston High School along with the Sappamish kids, are those kids ever, um, connected or done anything together before they get to middle school? Like, you know, maybe a, I don't know, field day or a school lunch? I mean, maybe those kids that all three school districts and buildings, there could be some way for them to connect with each other before they get to middle school. And and maybe that would help them all get to know and understand each other better.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for the comments. Um, so number ten, impact aid, you know, we've had discussions on that. I think that the biggest thing there was, um, we, I think we had efforts, um, in the past to try to separate impact aid. Um, so for better better tracking for tribes versus military and such. Um, so I uh I think we still need to think somewhere on that, correct?
Yes, and Mike, Mike is behind me, so he can, um, uh, correct me if I'm wrong. But uh, there, it looks like to the request, sorry, different Mike, our other Mike, he's our finance director.
Yeah.
If it's the communication of the dollar amounts received and where it goes, that's a breakdown that Mike's department can do. We would just need to know, do you want that, um, twice a year, quarterly? If it's the communication of the dollar amounts received and where it goes, that's a breakdown that Mike's department can do. We would just need to know, do you want that um twice a year, quarterly, um uh what that looks like once a year at this meeting? Or where, when and where would you want that information shared? I guess would be.
I think I think it would be helpful if it was quarterly and then I can share um uh with the council.
That'd be awesome.
Mm-hmm.
And then so just send it to you, Brennan, okay? Okay. Um, number nine, Skyward Google classroom, um, you know, the discussions in the past have centered around cybersecurity, um, which um I don't think anything has changed there. Um, that I'm aware of, we're still limited on being able to uh not being able to create those counts with uh with non-employees um for cybersecurity and risk management reasons. That continues to be the issue that we're having with uh with our risk management that with that.
That that's accurate. Uh Skyward piece, um, we do share and then I will look um down the tables and there's other parts of our team that can help answer, so I'm not gonna go talking. But um Skyward we can share, we do share with our academic coaches, um anybody that has a release of information form. We share that information with them and they can get on and look at the student, that individual student's um information. With the Google classroom, it's more difficult because it opens the entire classroom up to that person. So then they're able to see sensitive information that's protected under like in a hospital, patients' rights are HIPAA. In school, their rights are protected under FERPA. And so it protects them under the um FERPA to where we can't give them access to the Google classroom. Um, one of the members on our team when we receive the recommendations um suggested that we look into, so this is not a guarantee, but look into, we're using Panorama as a data collection. And so one of the things we're gonna look to see if it's possible, I'm not sure if it is, but we're gonna check to see if there's a way to set up um students that have the release of information forms in Panorama so that information collected, that you can see all of that information. It's become kind of a hub where um uh like discipline, there are student surveys that they fill out, all of that's one place and all that's kept. And so I know our team is checking to see if that's um something that we can do within that system.
Yeah, and then and also, sorry, uh just a reminder, there is the the guardian feature within Google Classroom. Um, you know, me, I'm listed as a as a, I believe that's a gentleman, you see, yeah, a guardian.
Mm-hmm.
So I get a weekly email that comes out uh for each each one of my children that um has a summary of all the assignments that they were assigned for that week. And any notes that were put in by the by the teacher will also show up there, uh any comments that they're making in the classrooms too. So we can continue to encourage people to sign up for that feature.
Mike, one thing to add on Google Classroom is that there's a big update. It's scheduled right now for quarter two, so sometime, anytime
Yeah.
that they're releasing more parent abilities and guardian abilities to to see what's in classroom as opposed to just getting that summary email.
Mm.
And so hopefully within the next few months, families will be able to get a clearer picture of what's existing within the Google classrooms. And that kind of pairs with an update they did about six months ago that allowed us to give all of our Native American liaisons the ability to visit any Google classroom of any of the kiddos to sort of see what's going on there. But again, as uh Rachel said, we're only able to do that with the liaisons because they're on staff.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Um, that was gonna be my question. Uh, I wanted to find out if there was some sort of agreement that we can put together and um understanding um uh and then also um is there a way we could set up uh our uh coaches to be volunteers and extension of N K S D? So just putting that out there. Um, I think that would be beneficial. And I think the liaisons um having access is really important. We would need to figure out how to coordinate to make sure that their uh their children are getting the services and support that they need.
Yeah.
Our academic coaches do fill out the volunteers, so they do that. We just have a couple's um academic coaches that are coaches for basketball and stuff, so they have access to it. Um, but the other ones don't, so.
Mm-hmm.
But they do have the volunteer paperwork filled out and they'll come in everything to be in the school application.
So are tribal education staff able to sign up as guardians on the Google account then for those students if they have releases then? Is that an avenue that concurrently happen?
It it's not an avenue because of the way the integration works. It's all born from Skyward. And so it's the the guardians identified within Skyward
Oh.
are the ones that automatically are tied to the kid. And that that's an integration thing.
Thank you for explaining that. I was unsure how they were linked. So I know, yeah, to other cases like different data share agreements, a different like merit staff employment agreement, M O Us into the place. So, you know, I wasn't sure how linked in the software.
The the tricky part for us and Rachel hit the nail on the head is FERPA. It's the 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 FERPA law that really keeps those those things locked up tight. And so that's what we're really trying to explore is how we can stay compliant with that, but give as much uh resourcing as much information as possible.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, so number eight is uh around committees. I'll I would just say uh absolutely. Um, you know, be welcome. Uh, I'd love to get as as many tribal members on as as possible. Uh, not just just one committee, but uh we are in the process of advertising for facilities committee. Uh, I think it's really important uh that that we get members from both tribes on the facilities committee um to help us kind of, you know, um uh forge a path forward. And also, you know, when we're um looking at facilities like sub-ummish at Wolfley and Kingston Middle School and High School, you know, um, I think we talked one time about um how we can incorporate uh artwork into those facilities too, that we'd like to do that. But um we just need participation in those committees. So um if we if just if there's any barrier, any way that uh you feel like you don't know what committees are out there or how people get involved, please let us know and we'll forward that information over.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, one of those other committees is the instructional materials committee, so the one that does curriculum. So absolutely, that would be one where encourage is, you know, encourage parents, community members, members of the council, you know, get on that committee.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because every time we look at a new curriculum, that's the committee that's that's vetting it, that's looking, going out, you know, searching, searching all the various vendors. Um, and so and Brennan makes the recommendation then to the superintendent board of if it's a good, if it's a good committee, you know, if it's a good curriculum and it meets what we need, there is something on the checklist that that talks about if it does meet the since time immemorial requirements. But, you know, do they necessarily know who's on that committee? So the more involvement um from yourselves and from Port Gamble that on that committee, that would be great. That we know that that check really is a true test and not just, well, we think so. Yeah.
Um, so I know this was one of our past um concerns, so I would like to ask, uh, are you making a ethics committee and where are you in the process of making an ethics committee if you are?
Uh, sure, we um at this point, um, I know that we are, the facilities committee is ongoing met. Uh, we're um asking for members for that. Uh, the finance committee, I don't think has had their first meeting yet. I think they should be, okay, yeah, that one should be coming up. We'll probably go through the same process about uh raising those. Um, you know, really, I think to get the ethics committee up, if, you know, um, there just needs to be a a clear mission statement for that group. So I think that's what we're kinda doing is, you know, we don't wanna stand stand up over the group without having a charter kind of person in place and kinda having a a road for that to go down and do that. Um, the other thing to keep in mind is we're probably pretty close to starting up on just the um uh mission and vision. Uh, I think that that would probably fall into that too or do that. So um I could just note a follow on this.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, um, I think six and seven are both around data. Um, I kinda just had a question on that. We received training from the state um recently, um I I can't remember the exact name of the train, but uh uh liaison with with tribals uh uh tribes. And a lot of the training that we received from the state was that the challenge with data is how it's being coded. Or are you guys aware of that? And is that kinda ongoing? Is that basically
Mm-hmm.
it's the way the forms are being filled out, they're they're not actually counted correctly?
Oh, yes, if they fill out more than one, it will just mean the American yes.
Yeah.
Yes. So we're trying to figure out a way for to help our um families fill those out. And we talked about doing it at our our back to school barbecue to help them. So we can help do those forms as well.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, cause I I think that's before we can actually kind of look at and evaluate the data, we can make sure that it's it's accurate. So it probably that's starting place with that.
Mm. Mm-hmm.
Um.
Is um I T A is it uh is that still the best way for data? We wanna get data to you to share it with you at that and then really where you share it back out to council and.
Yeah. Okay. Um, yeah, yes.
I have a question.
Um, so we learned Um, so we learned that once a parent fills out a form starting as early as kindergarten, they don't have to fill out the form again. What we're also wondering, you guys and Tony and I, um, we're just wondering if there's a way to do an audit to make sure that the tribal families who are attending N K S D, even if they filled out their form incorrectly five years ago, they could fill out a new form to make sure that their child is counted in that um data and in that count.
I think it's worth uh it's worth looking into. I can certainly look into seeing if there's a data call we can do from Skyward. Um, and then I think that I would probably work with Tony and Brenna to figure out the tricky way to um instead of just asking people, are you sure? Ask you more? Uh, instead of putting that out in a questionnaire because they have filled that out and checked that on there. So I I think just trying to fill out and figure out the appropriate way to ask those questions around. Um, would you like to change your form and and make that not seem abrasive to some families? So, but I will look into that with our Skyworks person.
And even what we talked about at I T P E C with um around kindergarten registration,
Mm-hmm.
the messaging that we were encouraging was um how do you want your child to be identified in terms of data? And do you want your child to be counted as tr- as tribal indigenous Native American Alaska native? Um, and what checking this other box or two or more or one or more um results in and just offering them that information? And when I say audit out loud, I mean, maybe people just have the option to resubmit the form and they can be updated in Skyward. And then we might see a change in numbers if we put that information out.
Mm-hmm. Yes, they can.
Um, but I'd be happy to help.
Thank you. Yeah, and kindergarten reg- registration, I think, sorry, I'm looking at our principal over here. I think we already have twenty five. And this time last year, I think we only had three registered. And I think it's up to twenty five. So great job, everybody involved with that.
Okay, um, number five is is really, I think, around feedback. Um, so I would really just kind of look for additional information on this. Um, I I feel like we're pulling for feedback, but just because I feel I believe me that that's true. So like I I will get, you know, what can we do better on this to the feedback, you know? Um, really, you know, Panorama, um accessibility of the board, uh the staff. Um, so is there is there any specific barriers that we're running into if we're providing feedback?
I'm interested in.
Yeah. And and maybe it's happening at the teacher level, the building level, um, you know, versus more at the the staff uh board level.
Okay, someone has a third working on meeting at the principal's for a monthly meeting, so.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so I just just know that as a board, we're very interested in in that. And we're interested in all four committees, but that one doesn't, I'm sure. So if if you feel like um you or any of the tribal council or or most important parents are running into barriers of providing feedback or feel like they're not listening to it, that's that's something that I think we need to bring up to the board.
Mm-hmm.
And we did just get some, um, our survey for our Native American education program um just came back. And so it's it's hot off the press. I know it's gonna be shared at um both I T A and P I um this next time around. I think we had ninety responses um around facts. So we we will have more data to share coming next week.
Rachel, we're also about to open the Panorama window for families uh for our final collection. And so any encouragement you can you can give the families to fill out that fam- family survey, we take it very seriously and it all gets disaggregated after it's submitted. So we do look at all the different groups of students. So any help that you guys could provide us with with that messaging, it's gonna, it'll be live the last week of April and then the first week of May. That's a great way for families to share their their experiences.
I see.
Okay. Um, and then really one through four, I kinda proposed, um, I I kinda see those as ones. Those are things that we can always improve on. Uh, you know, they specifically talk talk about the board and administrative staff. Um, I think that we can always learn more um about, you know, culture, um specific experiences, uh most importantly, um, you know, experiences within the schools. Anything you can provide us that, we're open, we're ready to hear about that. Um, so we appreciate, you know, working through the uh through our tribe or liaison, uh and just events like this, getting together. And then we also appreciate the the training that you provided in the past. Um, we do have it on a new basis, so we're interested, uh, any additional training that you can provide us to to help us with.
Mm-hmm. And we'll just add on that, that it's been great um meetings with Rachel coming on board. Um, she has been really open and honest with us. Um, and that has happened in the past. Um, so I really do appreciate it.
Okay.
I have a question.
Sure. So Rachel, maybe you can address this because you've been at the district office. Um, I agree from some teachers that they were being discouraged from using tribal members to come in as guest speakers um since COVID. And I don't know if something has changed or they were told that the district, someone at the district would let them know when they have permission to do that. And if whatever happened. So I mean, when I was teaching the second grade before COVID, we could have visited both um tribal, us, you know.
Right. I, yeah, I.
And that whether probably that I don't know, something maybe has changed.
Um, and so not that I'm aware of it, something if somebody was given that direction, I think I would just say, hear me now. And um please, welcome, welcome in our classrooms, welcome in our, I I mean, I would love to to see you all tomorrow at the culture fair at Kingston High School. Um, I I I I would love to take part. So just as I'm inviting you, please invite me. I've got two kids that should experience um uh your culture as well. And um I would say our staff. So I'm not sure where that came from, but I would just say that's not a belief, certainly not a belief that I have or the people that um that work closest with me have. And I don't believe any of our leadership team at this point would have that. And if they are, then I can have a conversation with them.
I was just gonna say, uh, we have a, any of our public events, you guys are all invited to. Just invitation, like Chief Seattle Days, New Journey, any of that kinda stuff. There's a powwow, our renewal powwow isn't two weekends, not this weekend, not the next weekend, the weekend after that, the weekend of the twenty sixth. So you guys are invited to that too. Come down, check out some dancers and some drummers and.
Why is it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. You have anything else for to go with? It's time expected, but not too much over. Let's say thank you for the up to extreme information. And thank our parents for their testimony. And um um welcome to all of our new council members to this process. And um look forward to um more um work together. Um, we had a lot in common and learned much from each other. So um and I just want to strive to stay as a from our display uh for this opportunity to meet and look forward to hearing back from you. And if we're able to, tonight, um, when you have that data, share it.
Absolutely. Yeah. Um, no, tha- again, thank you for having us. Um, thank you for the open and honest conversation. Again, I think it's really important. Um, you know, you will be getting a response from us. Um, look forward of uh future meetings. And I think the most important thing is just, um, you know, we you know, we come here humbly, uh we're not perfect, we're not doing everything perfect, but we're we're dedicated to good work, so you know, uh just please work with us and and uh we'll we'll uh come through whenever you can.
Any any protocol to during your meetings?
Yes, there is.
Yes.
I thought there might be, go ahead, anybody else have anything else to add, if anybody else in council decide, go ahead.
Yes.
Uh yeah, I I I need to lie for one minute, um so this is my last meeting on the school board, oh, um I made a commitment that if I was elected to city council that I would sit down once the uh school board had a chance to settle, um I feel we've reached that point with appointing Rachel, um spring break is over. Um and also uh some folks will remember, I started my journey as a school board as a candidate, the very first thing I did officially was to come here to this room and introduce myself to you all, um so I felt appropriate, symbolic, right, that I ended here. So um so I actually, in an orange folder, I transmitted my, I am officially resigning as of this evening, um this is my, yes, this is my
What? Sorry.
So meeting with you all was my last act as a school board director, um however, I will, I am still on the board of city council and I did insist to be part of the city's committee that meets with the with the tribal council, 'cause I want to continue this relationship as long as possible, so thank you all for um welcoming in the past to events.
Then, yeah, that's nice. Thank you for you bringing your heart, all your heart and soul, all these and being vulnerable and transparent with us. And that is not only when we're in session, but also when we keep emitting information, um the various functions we see each other at, it's very appreciated work and we're working on a meeting with the city council that we're gonna host, so look forward to having you here soon. Alright, anybody else in council, tribal council or the school board, any last words? No more, no more last meeting speech, just please.
I'll just No.
Nothing, Rick earned his.
Yeah, uh I'll just say, Rick, on behalf of the board, um thank you very much for your recent service, um we're fully committed, working with you and uh in touch and uh most importantly, thank the family for all the time and the love uh allowing you to come work with us, so uh it's just it's been an honor, uh especially the new uh you know, formership and uh learning from you and the process, you've been a great example to all the rest of the board members, um so thank you, alright.
Oh, I was just gonna second that one quick, 'cause I know, um just publicly to thank you, Rick, um for your service, um you are truly one of a kind and
Okay.
um your dedication to this district, to the support of the kids, um to this, just all of us, it's been tremendous, so I just wanna thank you very much for that. I know my time um on the board has been better because of you, so thank you very much.
Jay, wanna
Yeah, I just want to thank you, thank you for all your your dedication, you support, and we're proud of working with all of your city council. And Stacey, uh my daughter, Stacey.
I feel like I know you.
Alright, well the time is uh six forty five, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.